All right, folks, we're going to start our Village of Border Trustees meeting for Monday, December 4th at approximately 7:41 PM right now. Can I have a roll call of participants, please? Trustee Albert?
Present.
Trustee Deputy Mayor Corrigan?
Present.
Trustee Osborne?
Present.
Trustee Hoag?
Present.
And Mayor Curly is present. Uh, can we all, uh... Let's, I want to stand for the Pledge of Legions, if everyone don't mind, okay? Please stand for the Pledge of Legions. The Pledge of Legions unify the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Everyone, please sit down, please. We have upcoming meetings, a regular meeting is scheduled for Monday, January 8, 2024 at 7:00 PM, and a regular meeting is scheduled for Monday, February 5, 2024 at 7:00 PM. Can I have a motion for approval of the November 20th Border Trustee Meeting Minutes, please?
Trustee Corrigan?
Motion made by Trustee Corrigan, may I second, please?
Second, Trustee Hoag.
Second made by Trustee Hoag, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. At this time, it is 7:43 PM, and I'd like to open up a motion over a public hearing to consider the 2024 Community Development Block Grant, please? Can I have a motion up that public hearing, please?
Motion, Trustee Albert.
Motion made by Trustee Albert, can I get a second, please?
Trustee Corrigan?
Second made by Trustee Corrigan, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Mr. Reller, can you please brief us on this? Thank you.
Yes, um, Community Development Block Grant, acronym CDBG. This is a federal money which goes, which is HUD money, which goes to Rockland County, and Rockland County oversees it and distributing it throughout the county to various municipalities and organizations. You have to apply for it, and it's on a competitive basis. We've been doing this for decades, okay? They want me this year to give just a little bit of a background on this, about some of our prior CDBG awards. So for the past several years, for example, in 2018 and 19, we had Parking Lot B, which is across from the post office. That was repaved, and it was $170,250 in grants. We had West Maple Avenue Sidewalk Project over in the West Ward, doing the sidewalks, curbs, driveway aprons. That was a total of $300,000 in grants, but Mr. Swicki and his team were very good at getting a price, and we got it done for actually around $250,000. We have Parking Lot A, which is across from the old Olay-Olay, near the insurance agency. That is a $200,000 grant right now. That is currently open. We have just utilized up, Rooker Engineering has been engaged, and they're going to be doing some engineering survey design work. And then we have an application, which we do not yet have the agreement with the county. It's for the repaving of Ed Fagan Drive, which is the roadway at the athletic fields. It goes from Ramapo Avenue down to the DPW. Okay, so those are some of the, and that's for $150,000. And that's, those are some of the grants that we've been doing in the past. One thing about this grant is it has to be done within the low to moderate income area of the village as according to the U.S. Census, okay? And low to moderate income is defined within each municipality individually. According to, they have some algorithm that they utilize, and it's based upon median household income. The median household income in the village of Suffolk is $87,000, okay? So then they have some algorithm where you take 80% of that number, then 50% of the people have to fall below, below that number. Anyways, it turns out there's one area within the village which is defined as low to moderate income, and that's in the West Ward, from West Maple Avenue going north, sort of underneath the underpass there, which is Orange Avenue, like up Chestnut Street, also over towards Orange Avenue to Route 202, then going up Route 202, okay? So we were trying to find a project that we could do for this year's application. And the CDBG program requires, requires not just to come up with a program by the mayor and the trustees, but they have the Citizen Advisory Committee, which Mayor Curly just appointed members to tonight. And what they, that's a cross-section of the community. It's people who own homes, people who don't own homes, renters, it's minorities, it's senior citizens, low-income people, high-income people, and alight. And this year's Citizen Advisory Committee, which came up with the project that we were proposing, that hopefully you will vote yes on, was Ernie Bosco, Charlie Rogers, Kathy Van Sickle, Teresa Shedler, Frances Glick, and then the advisors were Charles Swicki, ex-trustee Frank Hagan, and myself. And the project that we came up this year to do was to do a road paving project over in the West Ward on two roads. It'd be on West Park Place from Ramapo Avenue heading west, okay? So it's approximately 350 feet, and then that runs directly into, sort of on, connects like sort of around the bend to Meadow Avenue, and another like approximate 350 feet to West Maple Avenue, West Maple Avenue. So it's, so it's West Park Place going around the bend, Meadow Avenue for another 350 feet to West Maple Avenue, okay? And the estimated cost for that project is approximately $150,000. With this grant, they look for a municipal contribution. Typically, they look for 10% or more. So we're going to be asking in the application for $136,000 and $14,000 for the municipal contribution. If we get awarded less, if we get awarded $100,000, we're still going to keep the constant at 10%. So they'll give us $100,000, and we'll contribute only $10,000, okay? But if we want to do the whole project, we'll have to contribute more than $10,000, all right? One thing which is unique this year is they have not yet released the application, okay? So we have a meeting on Thursday of this week, or Wednesday or Thursday of this week, with the county. It's a mandatory meeting that I have to attend, and they're going to give us an update on where we stand with the application, when they're going to release it. But what we're doing is we're sort of lining up all the soldiers, such that when the application comes out, we're readily able to apply for this grant. And before you tonight, you'll also have a resolution which you'll vote on, which says that we can submit for this project, what the cost of the project is and what the municipal contribution is. They do like to see a roll call vote on this. It's federal money, and they like to see, you know, how everyone actually votes, and they do look for a unanimous vote of yea. That's it.
Fred, I had a question, actually. So you mentioned that the, that one of the projects came in under the amount that was estimated. So what happens? Do we get less of a grant? In other words, is the grant reduced essentially, or do we get to keep the difference?
Yeah, well, the Community Development Block Grant is a reimbursement grant, okay? So you don't get, like, that project in particular was $300,000 in awards. They don't give you $300,000. You put it in your bank account, and then you expense it. So what you actually have to do is you have to expense the money. We have to put out the money, and then we file paperwork to get reimbursed.
I see.
Yeah.
So we get less than that?
We get less than that.
Okay, that's, I was just wanting to clarify.
Right.
All right, thank you, Fred. At this point, is there anyone who would like to make any comments on this? Sure, very good.
Fred, how often do they determine if that particular area is still in the area that should get the grant? There's a lot of people moving in, a lot of people moving out. There's a lot of renters, there's a lot of renters who are renting to numerous people. Whose income do they look at?
Well, the census is done every 10 years, right? And it's done, it's done like, yeah. But they do, they do update the numbers basically annually, okay? They look at the numbers. And we actually had a project which was over on Park Avenue, which we were going to be repaving Park Avenue, because it was another area which was low to moderate income. And then the census data came out for that year, and it said, nope. They knocked it out. So we had to redefine that money someplace else.
Wasn't my salary, I swear it was not.
I mean, the whole area is, let's face it, it's in flux.
Yeah, for example, like right now, within the low to moderate income area is the new building on Orange Avenue, which was built by the Goldberg.
Really?
Right, so you're going to have higher-income people there. So that's going to start to skew, that's going to start to skew the census data within that region. There are municipalities within Rockland County that don't have any low to moderate income areas.
Yeah, but I don't know, if there's a way they can revise it to maybe every three to five years, because Rockland County is in flux.
Yeah, yeah.
Certain areas that were, are not.
Well, like I said, they don't wait every 10 years. The base data is done every 10 years, and then they do updates, they do updates.
Any other questions? At this point, can I have a motion to close the public hearing, please?
Trustee Corrigan?
Motion made by Trustee Corrigan, I get a second, please?
A second.
Second made by Trustee Osborne, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, Fred. I think at this point, we'll take a, we'll take a vote on the, on the resolution, all right? So we have a resolution accepting the Village of Suffolk Citizen Advisory Committee recommendations for the FY 2024 CDBG grant, application to be submitted for the West Park Place and Meadow Avenue paving project. Motion, please?
Trustee Corrigan?
Motion made by Trustee Corrigan, I get a second, please?
Second, Trustee Albert.
Second by Trustee Albert, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Can we get a roll call vote?
Thank you, Fred. Roll call vote, sure. On this one, can I have a roll call vote in reference to the resolution accepting the Village of Suffolk Citizen Advisory Committee recommendation, please? Trustee Albert?
Yes.
Trustee Deputy Mayor Corrigan?
Yes.
Trustee Osborne?
Yes.
Trustee Hoag?
Yes.
And Mayor Curly votes yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Chief, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Village Board. First off, I just want to say congratulations to the mayor, trustees Corrigan, Dennis Hoag, and Osborne on your elections. The Police Department, we look forward to working with you all during your term. On the month of November, the Police Department responded to 748 calls for service. As the board is aware, obviously, the holiday parade took place this past Saturday. From the Police Department's standpoint, the parade couldn't have gone any better. The parade had more floats and apparatus participate than it ever had before, and the parade was extremely well-attended. As you know, the lineup location and the route changed this year. It's been different than years in the past, and in my opinion, the parade was much less disruptive to village residents, to traffic as a whole. So I think it went off without a hitch. A huge amount of work goes into preparing for this parade, and I just wanted to thank everyone that was on the parade committee for volunteering their time to make this event a success. Additionally, I wanted to thank the Sheriff's Department, Ramapo and Mawa Police Departments, and the Suffolk Fire Department for all of their assistance. Last but not least, I want to thank Kathy Mills, Charles Swicki, and Joe Hunt, and all the guys from the DPW for everything they did to make the parade a success. We know how much work and effort they put into this. They did an outstanding job as usual, so I just wanted to make sure that they were recognized for their efforts. Our dear holiday toy drive is in full swing. We have active collection locations out through several businesses throughout the village. People can drop off unwrapped toys at any of these drop-off locations or at our station. December 15th, we'll be collecting those toys. And followed at the community center later that night, which I believe Mr. Mills is going to speak about a bit later, we'll be doing our toy sorting. As usual, the public's invited to volunteer in the sorting event, and obviously, the board's also invited, as every year. So we hope to see everybody there. That's all I have for my update. I just have one agenda item for the board's consideration tonight. I'm requesting that the board appoint Mr. Ryan Jagard as full-time dispatcher to fill a vacant budgeted position. Mr. Jagard, who's here tonight in the audience, currently resides in Salzburg with his wife and daughters. He joined the Navy in September of 2001 and served our country for 20 years until his retirement as Petty Officer First Class in 2021. During his enlistment in the Navy, he was stationed on the USS Abraham Lincoln, USS Ronald Reagan, USS Carl Vincent, and the USS Dwight D. Eisenhower. During his career, he was deployed to the Middle East, Japan, and Indonesia. We feel that his experience, feel that the experience Mr. Jagard brings to this position from an active-duty career with the U.S. Navy makes him well-suited for the position, and we're confident he'll be an asset to the Police Department as well as the Village of Suffolk as a whole.
Thank you very much, chief. You want to bring him up to the microphone with you?
Sure.
Just, how you doing, Ryan?
I'm doing well, thank you, Mayor.
As you met some of these people, that's Trustee Albert, Deputy Mayor Corrigan, Village Clerk Raymer, Mayor Curly, our village attorney Terry Rice, Trustee Hoag, and Trustee Osborne, okay? So at this point, you have a very impressive career behind you, and I hope you have another impressive career in front of you, okay? So I'd like to please, if I could have a motion, appoint Ryan Jagard as a dispatcher full-time.
I'll make that, Mayor.
Motion made by Trustee Osborne, can I get a second, please?
Second, Trustee Corrigan.
Second made by Trustee Corrigan, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Welcome to the team, sir, okay? Thank you.
Congratulations, welcome aboard.
Kathy, please, recreation?
Good evening, everybody, and again, Mike, congratulations. My congratulations to Mayor, Deputy Corrigan, Trustee Hoag, and Trustee Osborne.
Thanks, Kathy.
Good luck, we look forward to working with you in the next two years. So the couple of things that I have, this Thursday will be a busy, very busy evening in the village. Thursday, December 7th, the menorah lighting will be outside Suffolk Village Hall at 6:00 PM, and then the Pearl Harbor commemoration will be here in the auditorium at 7:00 PM. And then coming up as chief, chief, chief.
Chief.
I was going to call him Andy, and then I didn't want to.
That guy, chief guy, the chief guy.
Chief Lockland had mentioned at 5:30 will be the sort over at the community center for the PD Toy Drive, and the public is invited. And that's about it.
Thank you, Kathy Mills, again, great job with the parade, great job with, that was, people were, you know, happy, they was good, it was fun, okay? The Fire Department, I want to thank, and, you know, the, all the volunteers, and everyone that did, did a great job, and, you know, it made Suffolk proud that day. It made, and all the other surrounding communities saw how, how we can throw a nice party, as well as a barbecue, so, thank you very much.
It was a great evening, it was great, thank you.
At this point, let's do public comment, okay? At this point, I'd like to have a motion to open up public comment, please? Motion, please?
Motion, Trustee Albert.
Motion made by Trustee Albert, can I get a second, please?
Second.
Second made by Trustee Hoag, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. At this point, anyone like to make any comments? Feel free to come up. Okay, being none, I'll close the public comment period.
Patsy Wooters, 19 Mansfield Place. First of all, I want to congratulate all of you, and I want to thank you for your service to the people of the Village of Suffolk. It's how we keep our civilization going, and it's really very important, and I'm grateful to all of you. I also want to thank the village for hosting the Suffolk High School Class of 63 reunion back in September. I haven't been here since then to tell you that. We went, we meant to see Dan McInerney at the Railroad Museum, and Craig Long showed us the films here, and you guys missed it, but you really need to see that film from 1927, it is amazing. And I want to thank Kathy Mills, too, for your piece in this. It really was, we had a great time, you really did. And I have one little thing to ask for, and that is, if you could repair the streetlight on Mansfield Place, which has been out for a while.
On Mansfield Place?
Yeah, right over here.
Charles, you take care of that for me, please? Charles will take care of it. We constantly, just so you, just so you know, we constantly get requests to do different streetlights.
Sure.
And then Charles and his staff, they, if they don't know the number, they'll go to get the number, and we alert Orange and Rockland, and the Orange and Rockland does it, and sometimes I have to get on the phone and be a little more aggressive, you might say. But they always claim they're backed up, and this and that, so... But yes, we will get on it, and we will, it is, unfortunately, lights do go out, okay? But by the public telling us, that's how we know.
Well, I know you would hate for me to fall on my way over here to the meetings.
No, that's okay, thank you. I'm going to buy you a flashlight, too, just so you have one. Any other comments? Being none, can I have a motion to close the public comment period, please?
Motion, Trustee Albert.
Motion made by Trustee Albert, can I get a second, please? Second made by Trustee Osborne, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes. At this point, I'd like Charles Swicki, Department of Public Works, please? Charles, if you just go through them all, and what I'll do is I'll just ask for a consent agenda. Items 9A to 9 to 9F, not counting the resignation.
Okay. Good evening. Item A, requesting authorization for payment application number 17 for Tam Enterprises for the Gosher Hardening of Water Treatment Plan Project in the amount of $105,467,000. Item B, requesting authorization for payment application number 12 for Dewbury for the Gosher Hardening of Water Treatment Plan Project in the amount of $14,013.15. Item C, requesting authorization for change order number 2 to Capolo Services, Inc., for the Wastewater Treatment Plan Improvements Project, Contract 1G, reducing by the amount of $108,418 for a revised contract amount of $2,690,472. Item D, requesting authorization for change order number 1 to Tilcon New York, Inc., for the roadway improvements Phase 13 project, reducing the amount of $88,749.08 for the revised contract amount of $500,343.42. Item E, requesting authorization for change order number 1 to Tilcon New York, Inc., for the Parking Lot B paving project, reducing the amount of $59,992.32 for a revised contract amount of $247,657.68. Item F, requesting authorization for change order number 1 to Tilcon New York, Inc., for the roadway improvements Phase 12 project, reducing by the amount of $27,196.60 for a revised contract amount of $517,552.15.
Could I, at this point, have a resolution? I mean, at this point, I want to present these resolutions, 9A to 9F, for a vote, can I have a motion, please?
Motion, Trustee Albert.
Motion made by Trustee Albert, can I have a second, please?
Trustee Corrigan?
Second made by Trustee Corrigan, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, next item is Item G, authorization to accept the resignation of Mr. Matthew Torres with an effective, excuse me, effective date of December 8, 2023.
Yeah, Matthew Torres has worked here, I guess, for a few years, but he's moving down to, moving down south with his wife, all right? She's already down there, so he planned this out. But, um, so I got a motion accepting, accepting resignation of Matthew Torres, please?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Trustee Osborne, second, please?
Second, Trustee Albert.
Second made by Trustee Albert, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Charles. Mr. Mike Janito, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Board, we only have two resolutions for you. One is to amend the general fund budget. And currently, the village clerk's office is undertaking several major projects. One of them is the imaging of all birth and death certificates from 1896 to the present date, and they're going to be imaged to electronic format, as well as to microfilm. Another project is the development and implementation of employee manuals and training as required by federal and state law in certain human resource issues. And the third one is implementation and coordination between the departments of the policies and procedures that are needed to effectively administer the village's recently revised rental registration law. All of those major projects would typically require outside services, professional services from several experts. Instead, the village clerk has agreed to take those on for an additional stipend. And so this resolution is to provide that funding. We do have it available in the contingent account. So it'd be moving the money from the contingent account to the salary and benefit lines accordingly.
Can I please have a motion to amend the 2023-2024 general fund budget for village clerk additional responsibility? Motion, please?
Trustee Corrigan?
Motion made by Trustee Corrigan, I get a second, please?
Second, Trustee Albert.
Second made by Trustee Albert, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
The second resolution is based on the fact that the New York State Retirement System wrote us a letter indicating that the city, the village could elect a 41J, Section 41J of the Retirement and Social Security Law, which provides an additional benefit and service credit at the time of retirement for people that have built up a certain amount of sick time that they haven't used. The total cost to the village is under $6,000, and we're recommending that you adopt a resolution authorizing us to elect that provision.
Can I have a motion for the election divides, Section 41J pension benefit, please? Motion, please?
I'll make that, Mayor.
Motion made by Trustee Osborne, second made by Trustee Corrigan, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Janio, thank you very much for your service. No, let's go, no, we're going to do this now. At this point, I'd like to, I'm going to skip, this board's going to be going to executive session, but I'd like to, and before we do that, I'd like, um, I'd like to have a vote to appoint Bruce Levine as village prosecutor. Our, our past prosecutor had done it for many years, and he had left, and we had a temporary for a couple of months. And I had, I had come up with Bruce Levine. I find him to be a very competent man, a very local guy who cares about the community, is always there to help, and his legal experience through many years of being village attorney and actually being a village prosecutor in other villages is helpful in this village, and he's a very, a very understanding person. He's what I find, I guess I call him firm but fair, huh? And I think that's what we need, and I would like to, I'm recommending him, and I'm pointing Bruce Levine as village prosecutor, please, so...
As an independent contractor.
As an independent contractor, with a contract between us that'll be, you know, approved by the mayor and, and reviewed by the village attorney, okay? So can I please have a motion to approve Bruce Levine as village prosecutor, please?
Motion, Trustee Albert.
Motion made by Trustee Albert, can I have a second, please?
Second, Trustee Corrigan.
Second made by Trustee Corrigan, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Welcome aboard, Bruce, okay? Appreciate that, thank you, Bruce. You can stay or go now, Bruce, okay? We kept you for a long meeting, I told you 7 o'clock, I forgot you at a second meeting. But at this time... Nothing to do in general, no. At this time, the village is going to go into executive session for personal and litigation. We won't be making any votes when we come out on this, okay? It's for informative information. If anyone wants to stay, you can, but we'll just, when we come out, you know, the trustees might make a statement about, not about that meeting, just about things, or I might, but that's it. So if you want to stay, fine, if you don't want to stay, that's, that's fine. Also, I love seeing you all, and I know you love listening to me. So at this point, I have a motion, please, to go into executive session, please, for personal and litigation matters.
Trustee Corrigan?
Motion made by Trustee Corrigan, I get a second, please?
I'll second it.
Second made by Trustee Osborne, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. I'd like to make a motion to go out of executive session, back into the meeting, please? Motion, please?
Motion, Trustee Albert.
Motion made by Trustee Albert, second, please?
Trustee Corrigan?
Second made by Trustee Corrigan, all in favor? Aye. Motion passes. At this point, do the trustees have anything to say? Comments on anything? No?
I just want to reiterate what I've said at previous meetings. I'm very disappointed in the Board of Education voting to change the arrangement of the neighborhood schools into separating by age. I think that was a really poor decision.
Thank you, sir. And I'd just say thank you for everyone's great work on the parade. I think it was a great job, and...
Yes.
At this point, I'd like to make a motion to close the meeting, please. Motion, please?
Trustee Corrigan.
Motion made by trustee Corrigan. I get a second, please?
A second.
Second made by trustee Osborne. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, folks. Have a good night.